Could all rise and join in the pledge of allegiance? Thank you. Phil, if we'd have a roll call, please.
Craig Koshon.
Here.
Matt Dyer.
Here.
Tyler Polinkan.
Here.
Pat Murray.
Here.
Wiley Thurgood.
Here.
Thank you. Nice to have a full house here tonight. Welcome to our council meeting. First thing on the agenda is what you're all here for, I believe, and that's our... Oh, yes, excuse me.
Minutes.
Approve the minutes. We were emailing a copy of our minutes from our November 7th meeting. I need a motion to approve those minutes. I'll make a motion to approve minutes.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to approve the minutes from November 7th. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose the same. Thank you. Now, at our last meeting on November 7th, we did the first two readings of ordinance number 2017-15, which is a water utility slash bill liability ordinance that would change the liability for any property to be deferred to the actual owner of the property rather than the tenant living in the property. And before we entertain our third and final reading, I would like to open the floor to residents and also to council members for any discussion. So, any discussions on the floor from any of the landlords? Yes, Steve?
Dan?
Yeah, please, if you would, you could come forward. All of our meetings are taped, and this microphone here would pick you up so that it would be on our tape recording for our minutes. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. I'm here to, I guess, complain to your ordinance. In my opinion, you have nothing of enforcement here, and you're going pure over here, and you're going to put a burden on a lot of people that pay twice the taxes on each property, and sometimes three if it's a commercial property. There's several things that I don't even see addressed in the ordinance. One is the contract seller, and it says whoever the recorded person at the courthouse is. And if you go to the courthouse and look up a property that someone sold on contract, you'll find their name on the property card, but the tax bill goes to somebody else. It'll have Joe Blow or whoever. But the way your ordinance reads, the guy that sold it on contract, he's going to have to put the water bill in his name. It doesn't make sense. You're leaving the user off of this. The user's not going to be responsible anywhere. The renter, he's going to have it in his name.
We can make an amendment for contract sales, can't we?
You can. The way it's worded now is it goes to the address on the property tax card. And so, you're right, Steve. It's no different than in the case of somebody that's leasing the property. You're putting it back on the owner, not the occupant. The reason for that, as I understood, counsel, is that in the past, it was the tenants... The vast majority of accounts that we write off are because of tenant bills that went unpaid. I think Kevin figured out there was roughly 85% of the bills that we wrote off just a couple of weeks ago, to the tune of $25,000. That happens every year. May not be the same amount, but it's thousands of dollars every year.
It's getting higher.
And counsel said, "We have to do something about it." State Board of Accounts has told the city, "You have to do something about it." So, we're trying to. If you go back about five or six years ago, John Schultz brought this up and asked for a meeting with landlords at that time. I don't know if any of the folks out here tonight were there then, because the city was seriously considering doing this then. And the outcome of that meeting was that landlords promised that they would try to do a better job of trying to get... Make sure that tenants were paying their bills timely. And frankly, it just has not worked. The problem has increased in its severity compared to when it was back five, six years ago. So, when this came up with the write-off, and we're required to do that by the State Board of Accounts, I think Craig was one that said, "Why, you know, why are we writing off this amount? I'm not comfortable doing it until we figure out why this is happening." That is what then prompted the city to look into why we were experiencing this problem and how do we solve it? How do we do something that prevents it from recurring? And Kevin and the mayor, I think, contacted a number of communities around the state. One in particular that I think stands out is Noblesville. And Kevin, I don't know if you had figures from them, but they did something very similar to what we're talking about, and they were writing off a huge sum of money. A hundred thousand? Today, they're writing off roughly a thousand or two thousand. Okay? The problem that we're running into is that when we lose this kind of revenue, and you compile it over a period of time, that builds up pretty quickly, and it's a sizable sum, and it prevents the city then from doing projects that need to be done. Earlier, we talked about a number of projects and a capital improvement plan that we're facing that we're going to have to raise rates anyway. This exacerbates that problem because if we're not collecting these revenues as rate payers, we all pay more to offset that loss. And that's not fair to the vast majority of rate payers who are making those payments in a timely fashion. And I suspect all of you, if you live in the city, are paying your bills. So, by not addressing this issue, you're going to pay more if we don't, and we're trying to avoid that.
Well, that's not the point I'm trying to make. I understand you have a problem, and you need to take care of it, but why are you going to put the landlords... You're just giving them a problem. Why don't you do it in the middle? Make... If you shut the water off in a timely fashion, and the landlord has a notice, before you turn it back on, you get paid, or you're not going to turn it back on. It's just that simple, and you don't lose that.
Well... Well, you know... What's the statute on it, Kevin? You discussed that with us?
It's not a... It's not an ordinance. It's a state law.
How long's it going to go in debt two months?
There's a problem. I just looked at three of my bills. I started using water on 9/5. I got the bill on 10/6. It's not due to 11/1. And then you've got to wait 45 days and another 10.
Right.
That's 111 days. Another one, I guess, 112, 114. That's a third of the year. That's 30% of the year. So, why don't you get us involved probably? I'm just guessing. Because they're not paying the water bill. They're not paying the rent. So, let's work together and get them paid. Give us another...
The utility bill comes to you, though, Steve. It's going to get paid. Steve, if it is coming to you, you're getting involved.
Yeah.
I don't want all that. You've got the property manager. You've got problems.
You don't want all that. You don't want all that, but we're not doing something here that every other community around us isn't doing, except Auburn.
No, no, no. Monroe, Burn, Clifton, Geneva, and some of the... And Auburn, they all can put the water and sewer bills in their tenant's name, but the landlords are responsible, except Monroe, and they're not yet. But all those other communities...
I contacted all those communities. That's not what they told me, Steve.
Well, that's what they told me.
As a matter of fact, I've got copies of several of their ordinances. Yes, but...
I called Clifton today, Huntington, Portland, Angola, Wauwash, and Danworth. Everyone charged a deposit. Everyone, except for Wauwash, everyone can keep their tenant's name in there.
Said his name's against Clifton?
Clifton, Huntington, Portland, Angola, Wauwash, and Danworth.
So, your contention is we need a better deposit?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Danworth, obviously, if we're not in Ohio, they only charge the renters and land contract deposits, not a person that just owns a home. Whether that can be done, I don't know.
I'll speak up from the Trustee's office. If Steve Free puts the water in his name, he makes too much money. We can't pay that bill. We pay... I don't know how many we pay every month in the Trustee's office, which is what it counts. But we won't be paying anything then, because we can't... We can't pay Steve Free's water bill on somebody else. I mean, I checked today for four or five vouchers. Because Steve's name, he makes too much...
Kevin, what is the reason we've never done the deposits?
Well, as far as with NIPSCO and AEP, they've got a little more... A lot more recourse. They can go outside of state numbers. You know, if you live in the city, and then you go to move outside of the city, you have the AEP bill still in your name, they won't turn service on until you pay that. If somebody moves from Decatur to Burn or somewhere else, we can't go after that.
And then your rate's going to double because we have more staff. Let me ask you this. Everybody in this room's upset. I understand that. But let me ask you this. Nobody wants to pay more on their water bill. If you guys... Would you be all right with it being in your tenant's name? But you're still going to be liable for it at the end of the day, because we have to tangibly tie something to that house to make sure that we get our money by not letting all these tenants just fly by night? No, that's not our job to let you know. You can investigate yourself. Fuck your people. So, you want... So, how... We have 70-some odd people on properties, and you want us to be calling you with your three, and you with your 10, and you with your five? What, do you want us to hire more staff?
I have a house in Burn. Burn sends the copy of the late notice, the shut-off notice, not only to my tenants, but to me. So, that I can then get on hold and rent again.
NIPSCO and I, and I just heard that same house, TV actually had your tenant sign agreeing that if they get a shut-off notice, you get a shut-off notice as well, saying that. So, I, as a landlord, if somebody gets their utility shut-off, as the water department knows, I immediately fix it. I don't play games with that. I try to have your back.
I have 24 rental properties, and I have zero behind tenants, because I do monitor those things as well.
We keep the deposit until... One thing about we keep the deposit...
I understand. And you guys are doing it right, and we're not... That's not the issue.
So, this becomes more... Works for us to just kind of do this part-time and drop other jobs, and it becomes a big burden to do that, when we are trying to stay on top of it as well. Because that's my frustrating part, is I do try to do that, but now I'm going to have to implement more...
And there are a lot... I mean, thank you. You know, there are a lot that do what you do, and what you said, you'll call and make sure people hold their deposit, but here you said the same thing. But like Tim said, we had this meeting years ago with John, and the same thing was said. You know, we're going to do this for a minute.
Were they invited here at that meeting?
We weren't invited.
But it's just one of those... An issue that's ongoing that hasn't been fixed.
And I actually have to say, when one of my tenants gets behind... Aaron has, in the past, called me and said, "Hey, look..."
And we do it from time to time, but it's not time.
...hasn't paid for X amount of time, and I go over there and I take care of it, and I tell them, say, "Look, you need to get up there and pay that." And they always have. It's always been taken care of that way.
Well, and you guys have been great with us, too, with Belmont. You've been awesome. We get a phone call, "Hey, we're going to do this. We're going to shut this off." "No, don't shut it off. Put it in my name and let me handle the situation."
You're with Belmont Estates?
Yes, I am. And I'm sure, I've heard some of the balances out there. But again, I guess it dumbfounds me on the collection side. I've been talking to a few of the landlords. When we pull credit reports, I've never seen a sedated caterer collect. AEP, Fort Rain, NIPSCO, never sedated caterer. But do you turn it over to a collection agency?
Yeah, we do now.
It's just odd. I mean, I've been doing this for 30 years, so it's odd that I've never seen a sedated caterer collection.
Well, the company now... It's 2012, I believe.
And we are collecting. I mean, they are?
Yes. Where does it collect things?
And they take a fee?
You know how that works, you know? Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't.
Is yours statute... When you're saying that you can't shut off for 60 days, is that different than the electric and gas company?
That I don't know, as far as what they're...
I mean, the electric company doesn't play games. They put a shut-off notice, and it's done.
Kevin?
They're not regulated like we are, like water.
That's why I wonder. I mean, I don't know who's connected to that.
Would you... Do you have a list? We may not know who all of you are, but if you give your name to Kevin, he'll give you a list of your properties that we have written off funds from, and other properties that are delinquent that we haven't written off yet. I mean, some of you may have as much as $2,000 of delinquent accounts from your tenants that have moved on in the last five years that we haven't written off yet.
This isn't a $25,000 problem. This is a $125,000 problem over the last five years, and we are in arrears on it. We just wrote off what? 2011 and 2012. 9,500 people in Decatur have to cover that. Okay? It shouldn't be those 9,500 people's problem.
But you know what's frustrating to me is we have a lot of single tenants in our apartments that are paying the minimum fee, and no darn well they're not using the minimum amount of water. So, they're getting... You're getting a deal on them, you're losing some of the lead on the high end, and it all washes out. It doesn't seem like a big problem to me.
What is?
I think you get a pretty good deal on all these people that use all that much water and don't use any trash and break the sewer and... We all get stiff.
It's not just...
We all get stiff off it, too. It's part of the business.
Well, do you have any idea how much the infrastructure of a water line replacement costs? It's not just the water usage. It's the infrastructure below grade that we're...
So, what's the hesitation of going ahead and letting the tenant keep it in their name until they're 30 days, and then it goes over to the owner?
We actually have two ordinances written. One like that, and one for the owner. In talking with Kevin and his staff, who are the ones who have the burden of having to try to contact everyone, and if this was, you know, 15 landlords, it'd be different. And all honestly, the vast majority of you don't have any problems. Okay? It's... If you... I would like you to disperse their papers to them, so they can see just how much they have.
Yeah, but that's the point. Why are you going to put it all on us? I mean, we're not here saying that we don't want you to collect that. Just let them... The tenant put it in their name, and let us become responsible.
Well, if we put it in the tenant's name, then you still want us to...
Why? No, send it... All you have... When you send a delinquent notice, copy the... Copy to the recorded owner.
In email?
And one extra stamp.
With email?
You don't... They're not all delinquent, Kevin. Only the one...
Hi, everyone. I'm Scott Murray. I'm new to the council, filling in for Ken while he was gone. This was the first thing that's really come across the table that's really bothered me, because they're writing off $25,000 a year that, you know, we could be doing other things with it. So, your rental properties are part of a process. They're your business. You've decided to invest in this. You pay more taxes because you don't live there. This whole process is your business. You offer this building. You say, "With this property, you're going to get electricity. You're going to get water hookups." That's what you're offering the people. That's part of your agreement. So, at the end of the day, we can't write this off anymore. So, you're going to be responsible for it based off of your business agreement with your tenant. Now, how do we resolve that? How do we make everybody happy that this is not happening again? Because I'm not going to vote to write off $25,000 again. I'm not going to do it. So, A, is it in your name? B, is it in the tenant's name?
If it's in the tenant's name, I have... It's not our responsibility to get...
We don't have the ability to...
Yeah.
The girls up front, they don't have time, downtime. They're working constantly from time to here till they leave, and sometimes later. They don't have the time to write out another... Because you would be surprised how many delinquent bills they go through.
So, here are kind of my two ideas. One, we just give it to you as it is. It's under your name, and you just take it. This is your business deal. It's not ours. We hook up water, you pay for it. That's fine. My other idea is at... When you make an agreement with your rentee, you both come in here, you both sign the contract, both of your addresses are on this deal here to get water. The tenant can stay on the bill, and when they're late, you'll get a bill, and there'll be a service fee for us processing you getting the bill because your tenant didn't pay. And we can't do it for free.
It's going to cost us more money.
So, somebody is going to have the burden here. So, I'm personally willing to do either, but we can't afford to give away $25,000 a year for your business venture. That's what it is in the end.
But you've never come and tried this. You're saying $25,000 a year, that's from three years ago. There is no landlord responsible. If you meet us in the middle and just say, "We're responsible for..."
That's...
Don't send us any notices. You know what? I'll just bet you that they're not paying the utility bill. They're not paying the rent.
That's what I was trying to keep out of their name by making this other option, where if they're late, then it comes to you, and you guys deal with it.
You're going to ask us to come in here and sign?
Well, there has to be some kind of an agreement.
You're going to do a... You're going to do an ordinance that says we are responsible, that landlord or the homeowner recorded is responsible. Why would you need anything else? Why don't you just keep it this exactly the way it is?
It can't... Doesn't work that way.
And leave it... You don't... You've never made the landlords responsible.
That's what I... And we... I would charge... If we're going to be responsible, then I'm going to charge an extra $300 in a deposit in my name and about. It's going to get paid.
That's up to you.
That's an option.
Well, I think an option, too, is to go ahead and charge the landlord that service fee you're talking about, because we can turn around and charge the tenant. That'd be an addition.
I just don't know why we...
That's beautiful.
If you put it in a tenant's name, but leave the landlord responsible, they could very well rack up a $600, $700 bill, and then you get the notice.
Kevin, I want you to distribute those copies to those people.
Here's one for...
You'll be surprised when you see them, folks. You're going to be surprised.
Yeah, sell the property. Sell the property.
I understand. I understand, and I don't...
Sure.
Ken, I don't even think we need to get in the argument of what properties are. We're beyond that point. We're not there anymore. We don't... You're paying. We don't need to get on what owes. We just need to fix the problem. And if you guys are saying that you want it in the tenant's name, are you going to be okay if we can't send a delinquent notice out till 60 days or 90 days? Are you okay with getting hit with a...
$250?
$250, $400 bill? I mean, it might hit you in the face.
And it hopes them accountable each month that they're paying their monthly...
We got the deposit.
You know, they're... Be more careful on how much usage they have instead of charging...
The bottom line is, we're not going to start anything until, hopefully, 2018, the beginning of the year. So, we're going to eat the past five years of this delinquent debt. It doesn't really matter. We're going to write on matter.
Do us another $25,000 or more thousand.
Right.
2019, we're going to write on another $25,000.
If you guys will get involved in another solution for the next five years, we're going to be writing off all these bad debts.
I'm sorry, Dwight. Can't hear you.
My issue with it is to have a deal. I don't remember many water bills are coming in, I have to pay them, collect the tenants' and them bills. Is there a way we can be charged one fee per bunch for every unit we have? And keep it standard so that the rent is that every time, you know, instead of having a separate amount every single month? That's where the issue is, is to be able to practice every month.
Well, I... I mean, me personally, well, I own my own few properties myself. I take the average, and it's a little bit higher than that water bill I ever get, and I tack it on the rent. Now, I might put some of you guys out of ballpark on rentals getting more expensive, but that's... I just take... I have a couple of properties that charge an extra $100 a month, and sometimes the water bill's $80, sometimes it's $90, sometimes it's $110, but we're talking cents on the issue, but...
Another issue I have, Steve and Jared, you both have said you've contacted other municipalities, but I've also contacted and got differing stories. I've got copies of their ordinances.
I'm not lying.
I know you're not lying, Jared. I'm not calling you a liar. But who did you talk to? Or who did... Did you get a copy of their ordinances?
No, I just called the ladies in the office and talked to them.
I called her, too. They told me the same thing. I called Clifton, Burn, Huntington, and Portland.
I have copies of their ordinances, though. I mean, ordinance is part of it.
But I just called to say I wanted to put my... A bill in my name, and they said, "Okay." You know?
As far as some of those, you know, talking to...
You can do that.
Not easy.
Well, then, we also got... And we got Columbia City, did the same thing.
They actually did Columbia... I don't know. Columbia City actually puts it in the landlord's name, because they don't in all these other towns.
Columbia City, Hunter Town.
Man, I wish I'd have brought those with me. I wish I would have brought all of them with me.
This seems like if you put it in the tenant's name, and then charge it to the landlord, if they come to Lincoln, have to bill the landlord as well, the landlord then can go and go out and take care of these.
I think there needs to be a written contract agreement when you sign your utilities. I don't know why we allow people just to call and say, "I need my water hooked up." I think that's the weirdest thing ever.
I just said to her, "Does anybody look for any type of agreement?"
I think...
She said, "No, I just..."
Hopefully, we can change that.
"...put my name in." Like, "Well, that's weird."
It'd be easier for you to charge a deposit like that than it would be for us. We're ready to get the $300 deposit for the apartment, and then you turn around and say, "We need another $300." I mean...
Again, I think that's more of a staffing issue. If we were doing deposits, we'd be receiving and issuing deposit returns every day, and right now, we don't have anyone to do that. We don't have the staff. It's just Kevin and two girls up here.
How many changes of service do we have a week, Kevin?
Uh, oh, that is over 100 a month. Some weeks it's 20, 30, some weeks it's 60, but it's usually, it's well over 100 a month. I'd say 115, 120, 130 a month. I'd say 115, 120, 130 a month.
Tell them, us people out here, what you're gonna do if it's in the landlord's name and you want to pay it, what are you gonna do to collect it?
We're not gonna turn the water back on.
You're gonna go to the tax department.
No, no. We're not gonna turn your water back on, I'm building.
The only you can do to tell the tax department, Jim, is you can ream the sewer. So, the portion of the bill that relates to sewer service, that can be leaned and collect his back taxes. The rest of the bill, and that's why if you look at your utility bill, it's a combination of five different services. It's fire protection, it's your stormwater, it's your sanitation, it's your water, your sewer. Uh, so, all of those and only thing statutorily that the city can lean is sewer. So, you know, that's not a solution because the bills that we're writing off are a compilation of all those different services.
I have a question to that. If you're gonna turn the, turn the water off or not turn the water back on, the buildings that I have, there's only one shut-off for the entire building. So, you're gonna penalize everybody that builds in that building for one person?
Well, if it's only got one-
Who's that one person?
If it's only got one-
Who is that one person? You?
No, what I'm saying is there's only one shut-off out of the street and, because you're gonna have to go inside the apartment to take the meter out.
If there's only one meter, but multiple places in, multiple units?
No, there's, there's meters in each apartment, but are you gonna go? Because always in the past what you did then was John would just go in and turn the, the meter off.
Okay.
Wouldn't even remove the meter, wouldn't take it out. There's only one street shut-off. So, if you're gonna turn it off in the entire building, is that what I'm hearing you're saying? For one person?
Well, we'll have to figure out a way to-
Kevin?
It'd have to be shut off to them.
Jeremy?
They, they do offer vacuum meters, yeah, for the apartments that you manage, the vacuum meter, the vacuum belt and vacuum, uh, vacuum meters. So, we've looked at it a few years ago when this was the real issue. It just, it never went anywhere. Um, but he does have a concern because it is one of the, one of these apartment complexes. So, if we're in there, you shut off four of them. But, you know, there, there is a way around that, Jeremy. If it's backstabbing one for it. Because I mean, you can't penalize everybody for one person.
No, no, that's not the intent, that's not the intent. I guess, uh, you know, we're not, we're not here to try to upset the apple cart here. We just want, we just want our utility bills paid, okay? I'll be glad to call those other municipalities again. I'll be glad to give each of you a copy of their ordinance. If they're not, if they're not, if they're not enforcing their ordinance, I cannot believe that that would be the case. Um, I'm not saying you got bad, not saying you got bad information.
I understand, there's four ladies in the office, there's two here, count them, Kevin, and then there's three, three ladies, and then I can, four, and then I go. I understand, if you want to charge deposits, you're not gonna have enough steps. I didn't ask in word how many people they had in the office. They're only doing the renters, the landowners, they're only gonna charge deposits.
How many of you did Kevin hand a paper to?
Mine's $900, but eight of them are hundreds, not mine. I know it doesn't matter in the end, but I'm just saying, I have my name on it, it's not correct.
Does it have individual people's names on there? Did you rent to those people?
We don't need to argue about that. We don't, Ken, I don't wanna step on your feet, but we don't have to argue about payments. We need to decide what we're gonna do moving forward.
And if, and if I did the math right, there's 4,500 water bills each now each month, does that sound correct?
Correct.
If you raise everybody's rate 50 cents, that's maybe $27,000 once you take care of the problem.
Well, that makes, that makes the 9,500, 9,500 people, your problem.
Yeah, but it's like buying, it's like buying clothes. You're paying more money for clothes, people are shoplifting. You're paying more taxes, people aren't-
This is a municipality, it's not a retail store.
This is, that's your business. It's not our business.
Yeah.
That's what it is in the end.
Yeah.
I, I understand that, but I'm not gonna raise somebody's bill because-
So, if you're selling them, that's the lower you get in tax base. It's gonna say that.
Well, once you sell them, when somebody else buys them, then there it is again, right? So, that doesn't affect it.
No, but I got it down to 1%. You only gonna pass 1% for 3%.
I understand that. I know where you're coming from, but is the issue that you have to pay for, it's coming to you every day and nobody else wants the extra paperwork, is that what?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, you want us to do your paperwork.
No! You're the service provider.
Let me ask this though. If we did, let me ask this, if the city took an approach as, when we send out a delinquent notice, we have to charge a certain amount of fee to cover the processing of doing it, would everybody in this room be okay with that? And if it went to the tenants and we just, I mean, I'm all right with changing the ordinance because it, it still keeps this to the property and then ultimately-
We're gonna get-
You're gonna be responsible.
They're still responsible.
And if it's not paid, the water's not coming back on until it's paid. You're all good with that.
And we really are trying to work with, I want, we need you guys. We need landlords.
And that's, that's the first. So, they're late on one month, but the next month, they're gonna get a delinquent bill and I'm gonna get a deposit too. Not none of this three, four months down the road.
And a processing fee. What's your, what's your timeline? What's your statute say?
We don't have staff to send out that sure.
What about an email? That takes time, Cindy.
We have to go through each bill hand by hand. We don't do it in alphabetical order, it's by cycle, by address. We're not gonna go through each bill hand by hand and stuff, actually, piece of paper.
So, they're holders for that?
$5,000 you might.
I still think it can be our responsibility to call and say, "Where are you at?" Yeah. Where we at? I, I do it all the time.
Yeah, any of you can call city halls anytime, ask how your tenants are, and, you know.
I, I say one thing.
Sure.
I heard you say twice just a minute, please, I don't wanna offend you, but you said, "We're not gonna do this." And you said it twice. But you can wait till- You, you said that and you're, but yet you're gonna make us do something that we shouldn't have to do because, let's, let's face it, the, the water, it's a, it's a multi-million dollar business, my grant or my not, I mean, you guys, I don't know what, what, what is the whole invoice?
Let me, let's back up this a little bit. Uh, a month ago, Kevin brought the $25,000 of write-offs to the board of works. This is it. And all the high-
When we discussed it, when we discussed it, every year when we have discussions, it's a tough thing for us to approve because we feel like 9,500 people are having to split that, that invoice, okay? It's not, you know, we don't have a money tree out back to go pull dollars off of to pay that, okay? It's coming out of all of our citizens. So, it was Mr. Koshaw who brought it up and says, "Why don't we look into this," okay? With that, I offered to contact several municipalities. I emailed several, several mayors. They sent me copies of their ordinances. They said, "We, we put it in the owner's name." I mean, flat out, they would self, they would email me saying, "We put it in the owner's name. Here's a copy of our ordinance." Okay? I don't think we're doing something that's unique. Uh, you're trying to tell us that we are doing something that's unique, but we have read other municipalities' ordinances. Tim has read them. That's how we based this. We're not, we're not trying to be mean to you, we're just, we just want our utility bills paid.
But, but I think, I think what we're saying here is, when we're asked, can you guys let us know? And, and you're fighting that. You're fighting, we're asking, why don't you let us know?
We don't have the staff to do that.
It's hard for the service fee, it's number two bills.
What's that?
Can I say something as the owners that have a lot of people?
You have the most. You have absolutely the most.
Most of these people don't owe me money because I enforce them by hand. I picked them, I took care of the situation, I get them pay a deposit. So, most of these people that owe you guys a ton of money, don't owe me money.
Well, that's what we're doing. We're gonna make you enforce.
But, but that's what I'm saying though.
Let me ask you, you have properties elsewhere, right?
Yes.
How do they do it? How do they do it?
Well, they're not, they're apartment complexes, they're not sub meters.
How do they do it?
It's in the owner's name. But that's, I, I have-
They don't have that problem.
Situation, as Kevin is well aware, because we are a HUD property, this is a full screwed up situation for me because I have months of even getting a hundred approval to charge my residents.
What's different about what we're doing from what other communities that you have places?
Well, we don't have sub meters. These are 56 houses. I don't have 56 houses anywhere else. But you're not letting me finish my conversation on what they're saying. These people don't owe me money.
That wasn't part of the question.
A lot of the changes on that space and people, they have a much more open whatever right now. If I can, I, you don't have to mail them to me, I will even get them from you. I will stop down here the first of every month. When I'm handing out utility reimbursement checks?
Okay.
I'll have the delinquent notice on my hand and go, "Yes, question, you're gonna sign that check for the water department."
See, what you're offering to do is something on your end and I appreciate that.
Yeah, but I mean, I just need a way of knowing it. And I can change a whole lot of your situation with me picking up delinquent notices each month.
And if you were to get them, they would accept it, so you would know.
Well, but you're saying putting it in my name, that's where it screws up my whole situation with mud and the tax because right now, if you enforce this, that's January 1st, that's why I had Belmont and State, so we have six grand to pay your water bills. So, you can have 56 shut-offs in February.
It's dress these off, we pay a lot for Belmont State.
Right.
Well, we're not gonna make you pay any old debt.
No, I'm not saying old debt. I'm saying the first month of water bill, Belmont and State, those things are great, guys.
Because their agreement with Ted won't be, she won't be able to get, taking care of that.
I mean, look, your first 56 shut-offs are gonna be mailed to me.
I understand that. I'm just gonna propose something here and I guess the rest of the council members can agree with me or not, but I would propose that we change this. It'll be in the, it can be in the tenant's name, but we would have to charge these rental properties a service fee and we're gonna send out two bills every month. And one, it, what's their computer program gonna cost? And it's gonna go to you, even if they're delinquent or not, and you can throw it in the trash, but it's coming both ways, but when, at the end of the day, that water's not getting turned back on until someone pays the bill.
Tyler, you need to explain that more though. We're gonna send out two, what would that cost? Yeah, who's, who's? What personnel we got to do that?
We can't, well, it's all, is it not all service and stuff? I mean, once, it's, it would, you're gonna add a thousand more bills, then you're gonna have to go out, but we're gonna have to charge us a service fee on that bill.
Why don't you just wait until it's delinquent one month? Then, I mean, we'll have to pay, we have to-
Then you have to go through each account, by each account, 4,500 is how it is.
You mean, you don't know?
You print out that report for the landlord?
A report doesn't show.
Print out that report?
Hell, they are printed off. They're not just printed off. You don't print off the delinquents.
You have a air receivable report that you get, that you can break down, um, like we use each street. You can break it down by vendor.
Yes, but that's not how, you can't, but not the way they print off bills.
Okay, but it's, like, same as, and again, I know Belmont is a very big problem. So, if I came in literally either like the last week of the month or the first week of the month before, I passed all those checks and get that to you, I'm not gonna give them a check, they're gonna sign it over. No, I'd invite y'all to be on this and I'm gonna give your phone over. But, you know what I'm saying? That's, that's the only way in my situation right now, um, and that, with that being said, with a huge amount of this being my situation, um, that's very easy, I mean, I can't take that, take that off.
I can, I can prepare the ordinance, you can broke down the one that you have two ratings and introduce another one that does something different, if that's what the council wants to do. And, you know, I don't know about sending out duplicate bills. We don't have, we don't have staff to do that. Well, I, I don't, I don't think we can make a decision about switching the bills tonight because my staff needs to determine whether, how that would be done. And if you're gonna hire another staff member, you might as well include insurance and all the retirement, all that stuff. So, are we gonna create a new process? Are we gonna create a better business?
Say that publicly.
Huh?
Say that publicly.
You already did.
What did I say?
Well, if we, if we have, if we have to create more service that we provide, we have to hire another person to do work, we have to pay benefits on that person, we have to pay insurance and retirement, where's that fee stop and when does their business become our business? That's the problem. I mean, where do we, where do we, where do we stop taking responsibility for their property? That's the problem. Do we?
No, you're wanting us to take responsibility for the tenant using your services.
Right, right. That's exactly right. That's exactly what it is. We want you to be responsible for your business and your tenants because we're statutorily tied to a 45-day contract on late fees. We're just trying to come up with a solution so everybody else in the city limits that pays the same amount doesn't get stuck with the bill that the people don't pay. Help us with the solution, then we'll come up with it. We're, we're not being bad, we're just trying to take care of the majority. So, help us.
But now, what if somebody was to pay my water bill, my grass to be green, I have twice as long a hot shower, and I use a lot more water if somebody else is paying my water bill.
Well, I mean, it's a very-
Are, are you meaning, what are you saying?
I'm saying that we're conservative with our water. And if, if, if you are gonna pay my water bill, I'm gonna have a green yard and I'm gonna be paying.
But is that, wait, Cindy, are you saying that, are you saying-
Because the owner is responsible, the tenant isn't gonna care what the water uses.
The tenant doesn't care. They got a leaky water-
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't understand her meaning on that. I'm just saying, all we wanna do is, is just, is, is take that responsibility away from the city.
Okay, can I, can I make a suggestion? Okay, first of all, if I hear everything that's going on out here, one is you want the tenant to be responsible for paying the bill, but you're ultimately responsible if the tenant doesn't. Anybody disagree with that?
No.
Okay. The second issue then is, how do we get notice to you in a timely fashion? That's the problem that we're dealing with. So, one of the things that we could try to do, I don't know if Kevin can check into this with our vendor, to see if there's some way that we can generate a report that you can call in and check. Uh, at least you can verify whether, you know, after a month, whether you got a tenant that's behind. We may not be able to send out a notice until a later time because of what we have to deal with, but eventually that will go out. But you can check and know early on whether you got a problem so that you don't get blindsided with the bill after 100 days of attendance.
They can do that now, can they, Kevin?
They can call in.
Yeah, we did, we did, it took better than it.
Yeah. I mean, you can do that now. And like you said, you do it and, and you probably, we probably don't have a problem with you, unfortunately, because of some of, some that we do have problems with.
So, so if-
And I'm gonna ask on everyone, because I don't want it.
Okay.
How do we tie it?
So, so if, I mean, the, the ordinance would read, the ordinance would read that the services to the residents, um, if you want the occupant to be responsible, then if, what I'm suggesting is an alternative, what we have on the table now, uh, we could set it up that way where the tenant would still be billed, but you're ultimately gonna be on the hook, okay?
And then it goes to where?
And we're not gonna send you a notice. If you wanna know, you need to call us.
If, if we get to a point of-
How do we know where we're at?
Excuse me?
How are we supposed to know where we're at?
Call us. Call every month. Just call every month.
I'm gonna call him and I'm gonna check all 14 problems, nothing every month. I'm gonna have him look them up because I'm not getting a $1,000 bill.
And all 14 properties probably aren't on the same building cycle, so how do we require six phone calls? we require six phone calls?
I'm gonna call him, and I'm gonna say, I need to know, or any of these people, let's go through them, and so is he, and so is she, and you're gonna tell me that's gonna take less time than you sending me a notice? If it's late?
That's what I'm saying, is, I think we need to check to see if there's a way to issue a notice, a duplicate notice. And if we can, then we can do it this way.
Or an email with alert, I don't know.
How do we hook?
It looks like a property tax, they like to do it for property tax, so...
How about the public record?
What's gonna be our recourse if they don't pay us? We have plans for you to tell you to turn the water off, but you're providing the service that we rely on.
They can't turn off for you by date, we're hoes.
If they give the property owner, we can shut it off. But they don't pay, and we can tell you to turn the water off, but you're providing the service that we rely on, and they have a health issue, can you shut the water off them?
Dwight, what you're getting into is the very reason we were talking about putting your name to begin with.
Right.
But you're providing the service that you shut it off.
That's like this lady here in the back, you saying that you're providing the service, you're wanting to call in and make sure that you're delinquent every month? If that bill was...
But we can't tell you to turn it off.
But if the bill was coming to you, you would never have a surprise bill.
But I don't know how much to charge them every month.
And in that, that's, no, okay. If you wanna know an average, an average bill, what your tenant charges, what your tenant uses at each location, I'd be happy to.
But it changes over all the time. Then you gotta bring the thing up for a second.
But it's an average, it averages out.
Formula based on what, how many people live there, and what the average use.
The other thing is, just like, exactly what Cindy said, which is, if, if not my bill, if he's responsible for my bill, I'm gonna use more water.
I understand that, but in your rental agreement, could you just not put in the agreement that you're gonna be responsible for this bill, and how much water you're gonna use? That doesn't mean that you're paying for the water. They're still gonna be tied to that water.
As long as their name is on the bill that works. If their name is not on the bill, that doesn't work, for most economies.
For your HUD issue?
Especially for HUD problems.
Okay.
We have a whole nother, I don't wanna linger on the fact, you guys all know we're a little bit different situation than everybody, um, but that is a big deal. If the tenant, and just like the chief is saying, they can't help, and they help a lot. They give you guys a lot of money, you know?
They're one dollar every month, we write it.
Literally. And that's a big deal, because if it's in our name...
Do any of you own properties in other communities? Where?
Remember all of them?
How does Burn do it?
When they get to where they're, get a delinquent and it's shut off, I get the notice.
But it's in the tenant's name?
Yes, sir. All my properties are shut off.
Jim, didn't you say that you were getting one in Geneva? Is that, you told me that today, or who's?
Where it's going, wait.
I just sent to you.
Well, they get the notice, but then I've got to pay.
How many of these would we be sending out?
How many what?
How many of these things would be sending out? I don't know. Is it a lot, or?
We really come up with a reasonable solution to me?
I don't know what we have.
What?
I don't know.
Have you written up a reasonable solution? As we've proven, this is complicated.
Well, I think, I think what the landlord is suggesting is that you allow the tenants to keep their due due value. They agree that they will be ultimately responsible.
How do they do that?
If we...
They sign a contract with the city? It says if the tenant doesn't pay, they...
Well, the ordinance is signed, the ordinance is gonna say that they are responsible. We're providing a service to that residence, that property.
Kevin.
So they are responsible. We're not a party to their leasing, to their tenant.
But we'll bill the tenant.
If, if they drop us to bill the tenant, we'll bill the tenant, but ultimately, if the tenant doesn't pay...
We're shutting off the water and not turning it back on.
We can shut off, and we'll not turn off until it's paid.
Okay.
Okay? But the issue, the only rub to that is, when do they get notice? And that's where...
They communicate with the city.
Either that, or we need to find, or we have the ability with our software to generate a report somehow that could happen.
When we pass our, our bills...
That's what, see, that's what I wonder, if we shouldn't hold off doing anything tonight, and let's see if we can figure out a way to kick out, and we charge extra if we have to do a dup- a duplicate bill.
And we need a contract, some kind of an agreement, that this person is getting water for this property, or by this person.
Maybe, maybe we, maybe we have each, now, you're not gonna have a mall, but you could have the major landlord signing something that authorizes a duplicate billing, and they agree to pay a service charge to do it. You could maybe work out something along those lines. But you know, when, when you got a single house, and somebody turns into a rental, they're not, they're not gonna know, and we're not gonna know that they did it for probably some time. Bigger, bigger landlords, it's gonna be easier to spot it. So... And maybe we should, maybe we'll look at it after a year, and see how it works.
We need a table, let's figure these things out.
If you have this bill, and so you have also been committed to a weekend, if this bill is, you're gonna have this bill that you have to add two actors.
Yeah, that's what Tyler was asking, hate you Tyler to go on addresses to the same thing.
It'd be nice there, the way you could just bill the delinquent one.
Out of the forty-five, I mean, most require a good... And when they hire somebody, it's a, it's a service, and you're going to have to sell it very cheap.
Intern, or maybe they could stuff a few letters.
How many delinquents, how many delinquents do you send out to the delinquents?
Well, I'm just wondering. And I think we got a lot of people out here that aren't, they're the ones that are coming to the landlords, that are, excuse me, they're too, because they're not the ones that are going to go to the house.
Well, that's the bottom line. We're here somebody's team.
I, I can, I can... Huh? You guys, I don't like, make, make the files. I can prepare either way.
Their name, it's their business.
It is their business.
Birdgall's got a pretty boy, he gets a lot of bill, he has months, he gives ten days, and then he has their bill. Tyler, I agree. It's their business. It's their hard business, making a decision on their business. Still, just make the bill, and that's it. It goes on there.
Sure, I guess, yeah. It has to be tabled, before it's...
I'm like, you do it. Well, it's their business, it's their business. Make the decision on their business. Still, just make the bill, and that's it. It goes on there.
Sure, I guess, yeah. It has to be tabled, before it's... I'm like, you do it. Well, it's their business, it's their business. Hey, Gary.
I don't understand what?
He was asking why the, why the software wouldn't allow us to do it.
I don't think it can, I know it can, but the Dan Reddick, I don't want it, and I hope it don't let all the delinquents do it.
Or Washington Trust, it's kinda...
We may have to leave them be, not for two months, anybody.
Oh, we can't let them be.
Then, then you're gonna open, see how it works, and hardly anybody else.
How many trusts, Washington Township can't pay?
We can not pay, we cannot change, and it's made, because if we put your name, you make too much money.
Well, yep, yep, three charges. Go ahead and do what you...
D B D E L, Daryl Matt's name, Daryl makes too much money.
Or you can decide to go a different...
About here, somebody makes a bunch, a bunch of money.
The request has been made.
And I think we have four vouchers, mother loan, right? Right now, we pay more water bills, not probably anything else for this year than anything else. The only way I see to do this is deposit.
I'm not, I'm personally not interested in taking deposits. I would be more lenient towards, if we have to tie it, you can put it in the tenant's name and tie it to the homeowner, but just know that you, as the homeowner, are gonna be responsible at the end of it. I'm gonna suggest that maybe we table this, look into our computer processing system, that if we can generate two bills, we'll generate two bills, and they'll just simultaneously come to you, if we can physically do it, we're gonna have to look into it with our software, but...
And there would be a fee then attached?
And then we would have to charge a fee for the extra postage, but I think that would be, if you guys are getting charged a couple bucks a month for this, it...
Only when they're delinquent, or every month?
Well, if we're gonna send you a, we, I say, instead of searching for delinquent every month, we just send you a bill every month, and if you wanna open it, you don't have to open it.
But I, I just, and my book shows me when somebody is thirty days late, forty-five days late, sixty days late, and I can generate, and it flags me, I mean, I actually have a flag that says, hey, this guy needs to be...
I under- I understand, I worry...
I mean, my thirty-three hundred dollar program does that, I guess I'm not sure.
Well, I'm not using the software either, that's why I'm saying...
None of us up here use the software.
And I don't know what...
And, and maybe because you're looking at fourteen to twenty properties, and Kevin's working with forty-six hundred.
Sure.
So it's a little bit different dynamics, so...
Sure. Yeah.
Tyler, are you making a motion to table this? I'm making a motion to table it, but I suggest that we look into it, and there really needs to be, we will make a decision before the end of the year, one way or the other, so...
I agree.
That's where I'm at right now. If we can physically do it with our computer system... If not... These people made their voice heard, if we can do it, then let's see if we can do it, if we can't... Yeah, you have, your folks are gonna have to understand, if our, if our software cannot do that, it can't do it.
So, well, but to...
Who's top?
To not look at options, this is Daryl.
We'll look at options.
To not look at options for software updates, it's silly.
Well, that's what we're saying, we're gonna, we're gonna check into it. We'll do that.
Okay, well, I just wanna make sure, because Ken said, well, if our, our software can't do that...
Okay, well, if our software can't do that, and if something is available that's affordable...
Well, how old is your software?
I don't know, I have no idea.
It probably won't have that ability, but there may be an option to get that in.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, and we'll, I'll make the...
There's a motion.
I'll make the motion to table till next meeting, and look into the software.
Yeah, that was, that was...
Well, we'll be meeting two weeks, uh, December fifth.
December fifth.
Is our next... That's your notice.
And for the letter, that was a courtesy, just to you guys, you know, most of these decisions are public notice, it's just newspaper reading, but we thought...
We can't make you get the paper.
And this has been a discussion for over a year, so it's not like we just did it the last couple of weeks.
Yeah, she's not knee jerk by any means. And Jared, I really did call all those communities, I have copies, I'll be glad to give them to you.
No, I didn't, I didn't say that.
I wanna second Tyler's motion, let's table it till the December fifth meeting. We can try to figure out if we can make adjustments to our software, um, or upgrades to it, that might be possible, that we can have a, a happy meeting.
Now, everybody wants to get the bill, is that, is that, is that correct? Everybody wants to get...
I would like to see a thirty day late or forty-five day late bill. I don't care to have every bill, I would just like to see a late bill.
But you're asking us to do for some...
It's possible.
If there's cost...
Yeah, it's all a matter of whether the software...
Then you wouldn't have to spend on that billing fee, or the daily fee.
Sure. I appreciate it. Just understand that none of us are after you folks, okay? One, that's not our intention. We want everyone to be happy. We wanna work with you. Excuse me?
You should be after Belmont and State, so I'm just gonna run, I'll just be pretty busy.
Well, trust me, uh, yeah, you are the biggest offender.
I am not, I'm being by the...
No, it's, it's your, it's your tenants. Your tenants. If you can just keep them there a little longer, they seem, they seem...
Um, we're doing pretty good. You guys, the water guys here, they come out, we're doing pretty good here lately. It's changed a lot the last year, but we're working on it.
So I have a motion and a second to table this, uh, to give me and our staff more time to see if there are some software updates that we could, uh, so that we could issue duplicate statements? Delinquent statements. Uh, delinquent statements, or just what is available with our software. Uh, while we're checking that, we can also look into the possibility of deposits, although I don't think we're going to go that way. No.
Unless you want to collect a deposit also, then you can just always have it on hand.
That's what I said, I mean, I, I think we should.
Well, you could.
If it's gonna follow the land...
You can do it if you want to.
This is your folks' business, not ours.
I think that's what I look at now.
I mean, that's your decision, not ours, committee board.
I agree. It's all our business, guys.
It's not our business, the water business is your business.
Now, the rental property is your business.
But, hey, the water business, it's all our, our business in here. Not just you, not just here.
Not, right, it's the whole town.
Because without both of us working together, this is gonna be a bigger mess.
Yep.
Because if we sell our property...
And we have maybe fifteen or so represented, uh, owners here, out of forty-five hundred or so total accounts, okay? Again, we represent all forty-five hundred, not the fifteen of you, okay? And that's what we want, and that's what we're, and that's what we wanna do, is to be fair to the entire city, okay? That's all.
And we wanna work with you.
Yeah.
If we know that, if we know that somebody's delinquent, I guarantee you, we will be on them, and they will have that bill paid very quickly, or they will not be living there. It's like, if you let us know, if there's some way to let us know.
But it's a two-way street, you, like we said before, you can call us. Call Kevin, call Kevin and find out...
We're not gonna like it.
Let me talk, Karen. Call and find out what cycle they're on, because they're not all fourteen gonna be on the same cycle. This week, you might call and say how or night two, this week.
They're calling for all fourteen, I'm gonna know if they're late, I'm gonna call one come on.
They won't be built the same time, that's not...
Doesn't matter, you'll know if they're late.
Or if they're built, they're late.
That's not, that can't be done, do you? Can't be done. Okay, so I got a motion and a second. All in favor of tabling this?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I didn't hear all that, let's do this again. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I have a couple ayes, and I guess, I guess it's been tabled. We'll meet again, uh, December fifth to discuss this again. Thank you for coming, folks. Thank you all, seriously, for coming and your inputs. We need it.
Yep, thank you.
Try to work with it. Next order of business that we have is a third and final reading of ordinance two thousand seventeen dash sixteen for a pedestrian alley, uh, here downtown between Home Place and Wood Rungs.
Hey, I'll make a motion to, wait, 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 wait. Okay.
We're gonna work on the ordinance, the software. For billing. For double billing. Is that it?
Double billing or delinquency?
Yeah, no reading delinquencies.
Or more, or delinquency notice.
That's cool, that's cool.
I think what they're really saying is...
They don't want, they don't want...
They don't want, they don't want double billing, they, they just want a delinquency notice.
And at the end of the day, they're still gonna pay for it.
I, I guess I don't know if it pays for it, but if our software's back... You guys are all council and stuff up here talking to yourselves. See what they think. Let's not put on that, there should be software out there that should be able to calculate what's going on, okay? There should be a software out there that can do that. A fifty dollar QuickBooks system, we'll do that, I can do it, it might be harder to scale, but there should be software.
If none of them cared about the pedestrian alley.
No, I, I stopped, I stopped that until we could get our, gather our thoughts here. So, Tim, if you're ready, are we, we ready to read that ordinance you have at handy there?
No.
Two thousand seventeen dash sixteen.
This is the one that isn't a very short title.
No, you're gonna take some long breaths.
No, do it, okay.
Did you get a second?
Second? No, not yet.
We haven't...
I stopped him. I stopped him in midstream. So Wiley, you wanna try it again?
Okay. I'll make a motion to place ordinance two thousand seventeen dash sixteen on its third reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance two thousand seventeen dash sixteen in its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Ordinance two thousand seventeen dash sixteen, short title, on ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur, which amend schedule five of chapter seventy-seven of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of two thousand fifteen, all supplemented, by establishing Madison Street as a one-way street between First Street and Second Street, and by authorizing pedestrian use of such street, as well as pedestrian use of a portion of an alley located within the city block ordered by Monroe Street, Madison Street, First Street, and Second Street.
I'll make a motion now to pass ordinance two thousand seventeen dash sixteen on its third reading. We better. Second. The motion and a second, uh, to pass ordinance two thousand seventeen dash sixteen in its third reading, whatever we'll call, vote.
Craig Kouschel?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes. Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley, sir?
Yes. Ordinance number 2017-16 has been passed. Next up on the agenda is the termination of our agreement with Adams County Soil and Water Conservation District for our stormwater...
They won't get back in here if anybody ran out.
No, not. We were using Tim Graff from the Adams County Soil and Water Conservation to our stormwater management. We made this a matter of record in the Board of Works meeting. Now we need to do the same in the council meeting. Then it goes to the county commissioners and the county council for their approval, I guess. What are we doing here?
Okay, this is a termination agreement that terminates the stormwater...
The interlokal agreement.
...interlokal agreement that we have with the county. The county's employee, Tim Graff, was providing stormwater services to the city. He's left the county's employment.
Okay.
Don Bergdahl has taken over that responsibility. We no longer need the interlokal agreement. This basically terminates, it says that both the county and the city have complied and performed duties that they were obligated to up to the point of Mr. Graff's resignation from county employment. This now terminates it and each is released from any further liability under the agreement.
Okay.
So I need a motion to terminate, approve termination of this agreement.
So moved.
So I have a motion and a second to terminate the stormwater agreement with Adams County Soil and Water Conservation District. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Thank you. Uh, next. I believe Mr. Baker, somewhere in his pile of goodies over here, has an ordinance for a... To amend our current 2017 salary ordinance for Operation Pullover Grant. Do you have that one, Tim?
I do. Okay, Phyllis, what's the ordinance on this one? Seventeen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen? Did you have a seventeen?
Well, we'll...
What's the seventeen?
Oh, seventeen is the annexation ordinance. The annexation, I had to publish it, so I had to give it an ordinance number.
Oh, okay. So this is ordinance number 2017-18, and it's to amend our salary ordinance for our Operation Pullover Grant.
Basically, the amendment is to clarify language in the ordinance. The salary ordinance this year references that the rate of pay would be based on, I think, the first patrolman position, and under the terms of the grant, that has to be wooded differently. It has to be what we now have in next year's ordinance, which says that it's based on the officer's individual hourly rate. So it's just a clarification of the language. So you're amending a section of our existing 2016-15 ordinance that applies for 2017 to that effect.
I'll then make a motion to place ordinance 2017-18 on its first reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-18 in its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2017-18, short title, an ordinance amending salary ordinance number 2016-15 regarding police overtime pay.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-18 on its first reading.
Second. I have a motion to pass ordinance 2017-18 on its first reading. Whatever we'll call vote, please.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley, sir?
Yes. I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2017-18 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-18 in its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2017-18, short title, an ordinance amending salary ordinance number 2016-15 regarding police overtime pay.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-18 on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-18 in its second reading. Phyllis, whatever we'll call vote.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley, sir?
Yes. Do we want to suspend the rules, or do we want to...
Go ahead.
Go ahead and suspend, okay. I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2017 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2017-18 in its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance number 2017-18, short title, an ordinance amending salary ordinance number 2016-15 regarding police overtime pay.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-18 on its third reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-18 on its third reading. Phyllis, whatever we'll call vote.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley, sir?
Yes. Ordinance 2017-18 is adopted. Next up, Tim, I think you have another ordinance. I have a bunch of them.
Yep. How about one to amend the 2018 salary ordinance to include emergency call...
No.
No, you don't have that one?
No. We don't need that one.
Excuse me?
I thought that was the one that they said that they didn't need.
Oh, yeah, sorry. That's changed.
Okay. We're moving right along now. How about an ordinance to amend the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 to add a handicap parking space?
I do have that.
Well, I would really like to point out something most probably in question, two things actually. One, it has off-street parking that pulls right up to the back of the house where there is the door that would be closer than the door that suggested handicap parking space is going to be located. And secondly, nobody was there just yet currently. There's nobody who resides at that property.
Chairman? Chairman, do you know anything?
The ADA is supposed to be moving in, so I'm ready to say...
Yeah, and we can't ignore a request because of the ADA compliance, so...
I was just pointing...
I understand. I understand what you're saying.
Sorry, Mary.
Okay.
Okay, so, Tim, you have an ordinance for that? What's that number?
This one's nineteen.
This is gonna be ordinance 2017-19.
I'll make a motion then to place ordinance 2017-19 on its first reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-19 on its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Tim?
Ordinance number 2017-19, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur which amends Chapter 78, Schedule 3 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented to add a handicap parking space on Madison Street.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-19 on its first reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-19 on its first reading. Whatever we'll call vote, please.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley, sir?
Yes. I'll make a motion now to place ordinance 2017-19 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-19 in its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Tim?
Ordinance 2017-19, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur which amends Chapter 78, Schedule 3 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015 as supplemented to add a handicap parking space on Madison Street.
Make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-19 on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-19 on its second reading. Whatever we'll call vote.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley, sir?
Yes.
Tyler's still stewing over there.
Yeah.
I would say we don't need to do this meeting, do we?
We'll pass on.
Yeah.
Can we table this?
Yeah.
Want to?
Jeremy, when is she moving in?
Sometime in December. They said it's not in the rolling due to...
Okay, we can table it until December 5th.
I'll make a motion to then table ordinance 2017-19 for its third reading.
Second.
On December 5th.
December 5th?
Yep.
Second. I have a motion and a second to table ordinance 2017-19 for its third reading on December 5th at that council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Tim, do you have more ordinances?
I have another one.
I don't even have it on my agenda.
I know. This is one that Jeremy had requested. This deals with a couple of places where the county transferred jurisdiction of some streets to the city. It was where part of it was maintained by the county, part of it the city. It's now in the city. Specifically, it's Mercer Avenue from Angus Drive out to 200, is that correct? And then also a portion of Industrial Park Road that runs from Mercer Avenue... I'm sorry, from Monroe Street to US 224. And then secondly, so this ordinance does a couple of things. One, it establishes a no-passing zone on that portion of Mercer Avenue, as well as it establishes a speed limit of forty-five on Mercer Avenue in that stretch, as well as a thirty mile per hour speed limit on Industrial Park Road on the stretch from West Monroe Street to US 224.
Do we have a number for this ordinance?
Is this Thunderbird, Joe?
This will be twenty.
Is that the road out to Thunderbird from Walgreens, the old Walgreens?
No, that's St. Mark's.
Are you still gonna do seventeen?
I have a cemetery.
Yeah, I gifted it because I had to advertise it with that name.
That's one I stretched out up here.
Jeremy, we're not doing that at all.
Where's this road? Okay, but we're not doing seventeen tonight.
No.
Behind St. Marks?
Yeah.
Going towards Thunderbird?
Yeah.
North and south like the cemetery in St. Marks?
Yep.
Between 224 and Monroe Street.
Okay.
I just couldn't figure it out.
Yeah. And then from Angus Drive to County Road 200 East on Mercer Avenue, it'd be a forty-five mile an hour speed limit with no passing zone for traffic both ways.
Okay, where's Mercer?
Angus Drive is all on Woodcrest. Right before you get to Church Scott.
Okay.
Forty-five.
Forty-five. What is it now?
It's not a change in the speed.
It's just the same speed.
Same speed for transport into the city.
This is just a...
This is just a...
No change in speed.
We're just transferring everything from the county to the city.
You bring speed on this. Yeah. We thought we were...
Okay, all right. From the status quo, it's just a transfer from the county to the city. We now have to adopt it, so it's part of our ordinance.
Okay, so what ordinance number are we...
Twenty.
Twenty?
Twenty.
What happened to seventeen? We just have to...
Seventeen is an annexation ordinance or the bank that you need to...
Oh, that's next meeting, okay, sorry. Okay, so we're on ordinance twenty. I'll then make a motion to place ordinance 2017-20 on its first reading by short title only. Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-20 in its first reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I'll make a motion and a... Whoa, Tim? Oh, I'm sorry, I got jumpy. Tim?
Ordinance 2017-20, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur which amends Chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, Schedule 7, no passing zones, and Schedule 8, speed limits, for the purpose of controlling traffic and establishing a maximum speed on a portion of Mercer Avenue, and for the purpose of establishing a max speed on a portion of Industrial Park Road.
But it's no change in speed limit.
That's right.
It's the same. Okay. All right, then I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-20 on its first reading. Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-20 on its first reading. Phyllis, whatever we'll call vote, please.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley, sir?
Yes.
I'll make a motion now to place ordinance 2017-20 on its second reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-20 in its second reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2017-20, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur which amends Chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, Schedule 7, no passing zones, and Schedule 8, speed limits, for the purpose of controlling traffic and establishing a maximum speed on a portion of Mercer Avenue, for the purpose of establishing a maximum speed on a portion of Industrial Park Road.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2017-20 on its second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-20 on its second reading. Phyllis, whatever we'll call vote.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley, sir?
Yes. Okay. I will make a motion to suspend the rules and place ordinance 2017-20 on its third reading by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to place ordinance 2017-20 in its third reading by short title only. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Ordinance 2017-20, short title, an ordinance of the common council of the city of Decatur which amends Chapter 77 of the Decatur Code of Ordinances of 2015, Schedule 7, no passing zones, Schedule 8, speed limits, for the purpose of controlling traffic and establishing a maximum speed on a portion of Mercer Avenue, for the purpose of establishing a maximum speed on a portion of Industrial Park Road.
I'll make a motion now to pass ordinance 2017-20 on its third reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass ordinance 2017-20 on its third reading. Phyllis, whatever we'll call vote.
Craig Koshaw?
Yes.
Matt Dyer?
Yes.
Tyler Fuloncamp?
Yes.
Scott Murray?
Yes.
Wiley, sir?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2017-20 has been adopted. Do you have any more ordinances, Tim?
I have a resolution.
I do. Is that for the employee handbook?
Yes.
Next up on the agenda, since we don't have any more ordinances, is a resolution to adopt our new employee handbook that has been finalized and okayed by all the council members and the department heads. So with that, if you want to introduce this resolution... Are we taking a break?
No.
Is this Resolution 15? I don't know. What's your resolution number, Tim?
Fifteen, I don't know. Both of those. This ordinance goes in time.
I think it's fifteen.
I don't know, it was taken.
Isn't it? Okay.
That's right.
And this is for the employee handbook?
Yep. Yep.
And this won't be effective until January one.
Effective January one.
Should that be part of the?
It's part of the, it's part of the resolution.
Part of the resolution, okay.
Then I'll make a motion to introduce resolution 2017-15 by short title only.
Second. I have a motion and a second to introduce resolution 2017-15 by short title. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Tim?
Resolution 2017-15, short title, a resolution of the common council of the city of Decatur which adopts a revised employee handbook for the city of Decatur, Indiana, effective January one, two thousand eighteen.
Okay, make a motion to pass resolution 2017-15 by, uh, just to make a motion, yeah.
Second. I have a motion and a second to pass resolution 2017-15. All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call on that, do it. Okay, opposed, the same? Thank you. Uh, resolution twenty seventeen- fifteen has been adopted. Um, the next thing I have, Phyllis, is here, publication for quiet title action filed by the city to clear up title to Decatur casting site. Need to make that a matter of record.
Yes. Uh, there, there will be a hearing on now, on December thirteenth. Hopefully, we don't have anybody show up and claim any ownership interest. If that's case, we'll move to default the law and apply title in the name of the city.
Where is that hearing?
Circuit Court. Uh, reason it's, there's still an issue with regard to an outstanding mortgage. Um, we're trying to sort that out, so we'll see what we need. We're not sure that, who, who actually the mortgage holder is now, 'cause it got changed, uh, sold a couple of times, and I have no clue.
You know what time that meeting is, is that hearing?
Uh, I don't. I'm off top of my head.
Okay, so we, um, this has been, uh.
This is just a legal notice.
Legal notice.
You have to serve, you have to serve notice by publication and basically sue the world. And then legal notice has to run three times a week apart, at least thirty days in advance of the actual court hearing, to give adequate notice to the world that the city is claiming ownership of this property. Nobody shows up, court orders that the title be cleared in the name of the city. Uh, we need, that's just a step that we need to pursue in order to be able to try to hold them and we market the property. Need to make a motion, make a matter of record to notice.
Motion to make it a matter of record to notice. Motion and a second to make this publication a matter of record, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Again, you.
What property is ready to cast? Thank you.
Um, Phyllis, I believe, has a certificate of appointment that she wants to make a matter of record.
I've appointed Bobby Feaster to serve as deputy court treasurer, and I, I swore, and she'll start in my office November twenty-seventh. We just need to make this a matter of record.
So moved. Second. I have a motion and a second to make a matter of record the certificate of appointment for Bobby Feaster, who will start employment with the city on November twenty-seventh. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Um, Tim, did you have anything else this evening?
I hope not.
'Cause I don't either. I will, I will say in my mayor's report a couple of things. First, this past Saturday, we had rain all day. Um, it's been an unusual fall, and as much as that Jeremy's crews have been out trying to pick up leaves, but most of the leaves have stayed on the trees. And just this past weekend, they really started coming down with all the rain. And with the leaves coming down and the rain coming down at the same time, we had a lot of streets with, uh, storm sewer drains getting clogged by the leaves. And, uh, I want to thank Jeremy and Don and a couple of the other guys on their staff for being out there Saturday, uh, just clearing off storm drains. Uh, we put a plea out on Facebook to the community to help us with that. Just be a good neighbor and go out and, and clear off your storm grate. And, uh, we had more negative comments from the public than we did positive comments about why that's the city's job and why aren't they picking up the leaves and things like that. Well, the leaves, uh, in case they hadn't noticed, this fall has been a little different and, though, I mean, two weeks ago, you still had green leaves on your tree. So I want to thank Jeremy and Don and, and the other guys that were out there in the rain, uh, clearing off the, the streets. We do have two machines, correct?
Yeah.
That we're using constantly when, when weather permits.
Yep.
So.
I was driving one of them today, eight hours a day.
Yep.
About four weeks a day.
The other thing I have is, is if you've all noticed, there's a new face back there that I don't think is going to be a face at all of our meetings. But, uh, that is Kurt's son, Brandon Whitty. And, uh, Brandon and his wife were both recently discharged from their time of service with the U.S. Army. And I just want to publicly thank you for your service and your wife. Uh, they're now making their home in Washington, Indiana. Uh, Brandon's here visiting, I assume, for Thanksgiving and decided to attend what is such an exciting meeting. Yeah, he came with his father. I hope he takes, I hope he takes you out for a drink after this, Brandon. While in the army, Brandon was stationed at Fort Campbell, Kentucky, with military operative, operative specialist thirteen Bravo, where he served as a canoneer, working with the halts or one fifty-five millimeter cannons and Paladin tanks. Did I say all that right?
I didn't have Paladin.
Oh?
No.
Oh? Well, then let's correct that.
You were trained on it.
You were trained on it, okay. But I just wanted to welcome you, welcome you to our meeting, and we don't generally have the crowd like this, and tempers don't generally flare, and, uh, they're just generally pretty boring.
Why ask him if he was worried up? Fired up.
What about me? What about me? Okay, uh, that was all I had on the mayor's report.
I had one.
Um, department heads. Lenny and Greg?
I was impressed on how governor handled the council, and I thought it went really well.
You weren't sitting up here. Jim? Kurt?
I'm just happy I wasn't the only bad hair in the rain.
Kevin, I hope you called Dan Rickard when you leave here tonight and just telling what a nice guy he is, yeah. Kevin? Okay. I get, yeah, thank you, Kevin, for.
Yeah, Kevin.
The work you're doing, yeah. Uh, Don? Melissa? Ann? Les?
I went through the EMA agenda a lot faster than you.
That's right, you weren't even, you weren't even gonna be here.
Yeah, uh, but, uh, we did, uh, the EMA advisory board voted to reappoint John August as, uh, EMA director again for another year appointment, so my signature, that letter will go before the commissioners in December. John's done a really good job, not just for the county, but for all the cities and.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, this could be, not officially, but this could be John's last hurrah this year. Uh, he's, he's talked about, you know, when I got.
If I'm not mistaken, he's in his seventies.
Yeah, well, he's close, and, uh, this would be his tenth. He was appointed first in oh-seven, so, or oh-six, so this would be, could, could be, but, uh, we're behind the twenty. The commission plus, so, um, John.
John does do a really good job, I'll give him that.
He's done.
Yes. Jeremy?
Leak collection is all going, um, really starting to make some good headway. You're right, leaks did change in a hurry since last time that we talked to you as well. I'm gonna try to keep running for another two weeks, so hopefully, yeah, including that, probably.
Hopefully, we don't get any snow between now and then. Yeah.
So, uh, we're on Madison Street, low, uh, start up on Tuesday morning.
Next Tuesday. And I think that since we last met, uh, all the driveway approaches, all the, all the sidewalks on master drive are now complete. Uh, only thing left is final coat on the asphalt, which, is that going to happen this year or not?
Yeah, um, within the next week it should happen, and Murray is down there in the street, working on street lights.
So. And we had a, the, the phone call that we had the other day about the water standing, was that just leaves again, you think?
A little bit, but no, it wasn't even that. I mean, I think the same guy said that the whole cap of the whole master drive was flooded. I, I said, you picture.
Yeah, I got the picture.
Straight for table.
Same thing, and it wasn't leaves.
It was flood?
Where at?
Man, I, I did shovel a lot of leaves off there. Did you get some? Cause we looked out there, didn't see much. On that one down about, okay, good, 'cause I didn't, I looked there, didn't see much. Okay, good, I had to go.
And I did notice a difference in that area from putting in that storm.
Yeah, okay, good, I'm glad, 'cause I said, I looked there and didn't see, good.
Now here we go again, huh?
Oh, it gets gone every time. Fool's play.
Everything that we opened up that, that day was literally leaves.
Yeah.
There was maybe one or two that wasn't leaves, but, I mean, it was unbelievable when you hit them with that power drill and it just.
Then the water goes.
Council members, any comments? Phyllis?
Uh, the redevelopment commission members are gonna be, need to be reappointed next year, and I, they all want to serve again. Council, um, appointed Craig Ruffet and Larry Ish. Mayor, you appointed Max Miller Ron Story and Rex Zinski. If you guys want to keep them on, then I'll get their certificate appointments ready for the next.
But you've already talked to all of them, they're, they're all willing to stay on and serve, good. That's kind of a, uh, fun little group of guys, that they like, they like to have their meetings.
Do we need a motion, though?
If you guys, just direct me that you want to appoint them again, I'll get their certificates ready. If you guys are okay with.
Motion to.
Counsel.
Motion to reappoint?
Appoint?
Second. Uh, motion and a second to reappoint the, the members of redevelopment from council. All in favor, and, and my appointments as well, come here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? Okay, anything else, Phyllis? Scott?
I just had one other thing. I mentioned it a couple of times, but going back to our, uh, water bills. But if we keep it in their name, I really think that there should be some kind of a binding document where the renter and the rente both sign, making an agreement that this is going to happen. And not just somebody call in and say, hey, this is Jojo, I need my water hooked up. I don't know why that's processed. I don't know why there's not already some legal document where you have to prove that you are the person agreeing to live on this property and get the utility hooked up.
And not their dog or.
Or brother or.
Five-year-old kid or whatever.
Paper boy or whatever.
It's just one more thing we need to look at in that, I think.
There should be some kind of an agreement.
I want to thank all of you guys for your patience this evening and dealing with the people. It, it's difficult when you're. Well, they have legitimate concerns, we need to listen to them. I don't, I didn't think any of them were out of line. I'm not. Mr. Carbock came up here and just said, hey, you just need to adopt the ordinance, tell them to put their big boy pants on, grow up. Tyler doesn't have a problem with his rentals. Don Bergdahl doesn't have a problem with his rentals, because they're doing it the right way, okay? We can sit here and say, yeah, they got a, they got a problem, but do they? Or is it just part of their business that they need to manage in a different way? So I, I don't want to, I'm not trying to take sides here, I'm just saying that I'm still saying, when I contact other municipalities, what I heard was that it's in the owner's name, it is not in the tenant's name. And if that's what I find out when I go back and examine this again, I'm, I may, I don't have a vote in it, but I may encourage you to stick with the ordinance as is.
Some of those communities that I talked to, although they're great, were allowing tenants to have a very.
Some of them were?[1663.28]